We'll call this July 29, 2024, special meeting of the Reno County Planning Commission to order. Staff, will you please call the roll?
Shortfeger.
Here.
Strannan.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Seltzer.
Here.
Macklin.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Gertsen.
Here.
Welcome, everyone. Tonight, we have a public hearing regarding the five text amendments that were written on the advice in the direction of the county commissioners. We'll get through the nuts and bolts of the meeting. This time in our packets, I trust that you've had a chance to review the minutes from our June 20 meeting. Chair will entertain a motion on those minutes.
So vote.
Second. And move in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving June 20, 2024 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Minutes are approved. To ensure the rights of all parties of interest and to provide an opportunity for each party to address the planning commission in an orderly manner, the planning commission will follow the fact-finding procedure tonight. First, we'll hear a presentation from staff on the proposed text amendments. At that time, we'll entertain any questions from the planning commission members to the staff. That time, we'll open the floor for public comments by audience members. After we have heard all of those comments, we will close the public hearing. At that time, the planning commission will discuss and the possible recommendation to approve or table the text amendments. During the public comment portion of the hearing, each person wishing to comment shall first state his name, his or her name, and address for the record. Each person will be provided with up to five minutes to make his or her comments on all the text amendments. Only one such occasion to comment to the planning commission shall be afforded to each person. Comments shall be addressed to the planning commission only and not to individual planning commission members or staff. During the public comment period, the planning commission will not answer any questions. The chair may grant extra time to finish a sentence or thought at his discretion. The public hearing will remain open to provide everyone with a chance to speak. After all the public testimony is received, the public hearing will be closed. Once the public hearing is closed, no additional oral or written testimony will be accepted for the record. The public hearing may be recessed periodically for short breaks during the course of the proceedings. The allotted time for each break and anticipated time for resumption of the hearing will be announced by the chair. The public hearing shall not resume prior to that announced time. During either recess, no person other than the county staff will be allowed to approach the planning commission to discuss any matter pertaining to the case. At all times, the planning commission will comply with provisions of the Kansas Open Meetings Act pertaining to communication among themselves. The public hearing may be recessed to a future date, time, and place to the extent deemed necessary by the commission. Likewise, the deliberations of the planning commission following the conclusions of the public hearing may take place at a later date, time, and to be decided by the commission, dependent on circumstances then existing. In such event, the date, time, and place of any subsequent meeting will be announced by the chair prior to recessing the meeting. With that, is there a motion to open the public hearing on case number 2024-10 by request by the planning commission for a series of text amendments to create Article 15-105, Paragraph 58A, Article 15-109, Paragraph 1L, Subparagraph L, Article 15-109, Paragraph 2, Subparagraph H, amend Article 15-109, Paragraph 2, Subparagraph A, and create 15-111, Paragraph 8?
I would so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Staff, will you please call a roll on that motion?
Shortfeger.
Yes.
Strannan.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Seltzer.
Yes.
Macklin.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Gertsen.
Yes.
Motion carries. Planning commission will not hear from staff.
Good evening, planning commission. Mark Montagian, county planner. These proposed text amendments are only for the eastern part of the fully zoned county. These text amendments are not for the western part of the county that is zoned CWCs or otherwise considered unzoned. The planning commission has the option tonight of making a motion to approve all five text amendments together, deny them altogether, or you could also handle each one of these text amendments individually or combining certain ones if you see fit to do something like that. One example, I would say, would be to consider the two minor amendments and the private solar amendments together as one group, and then maybe consider the commercial solar amendments separately. So with that, for the benefit of the public, and to kind of recap for you, I'm going to review each one of these text amendments again. I'll stand for any questions. So the first one is Article 15-105, 58A, and that's found on page 1512 in your packets. This is simply going to add a limited-scale solar commercial energy system as requiring a conditional use permit. It's inferred right now as an undefined type of land use, and all this is going to do is make it clear to everyone that if you want to establish a limited-scale commercial solar energy system, then it requires a conditional use permit. The second amendment is on 15-109-1L, and this is going to create private solar regulations for properties that are zoned agricultural. With that, the regulation that this board came up with was to require a zoning permit for a solar panel that would go in on agriculture-y zone property. What you decided to do was apply Article 13 to that solar panel, and those are our setback requirements for any other type of building that is zoned agricultural. The setback shall be measured from the nearest horizontal point of the solar panel to the property line. This board also set a maximum height of 20 feet. And of course, agricultural uses of these solar panels would be exempt from the zoning regulations upon the issuance of a no-fee zoning permit and a no-fee agricultural use exemption permit. With that, we also exempted roof-mounted solar panels from requiring any type of permit. What the roof does is just make it clear to people that are looking at our regulations that if I want to put a solar panel on my roof, then I do not need to have a permit from the zoning department. The next text amendment is right below that on 15-109-2A. This essentially just eliminates the term "solar collectors" from our regulations. Reason we decided to eliminate that term is because it is not defined anywhere in our zoning regulations, and so it is confusing as to what a solar collector is, and so that has been proposed to be eliminated from the regulations right now. The next amendment, which is on 15-109-2H, and that's found on page 15-16, the regulations. These are the same exact regulations that you established for agricultural properties, except these are for properties that are zoned R1, R2, R3, and V1, or Village District. Same exact regulations. Again, if you have a property that is being used for agricultural purposes, even though it is zoned R1, it will still be exempt from the zoning regulations. And then lastly, Article 15-118. This is the article that is going to prohibit a commercial solar farm in the zoned area of the county on the advice of the county commissioners. The two resolutions that you see listed in there for clarity purposes, that is the resolution that adopted the current zoning map, and then Resolution 2020-10 is the resolution that adopted the zoning in that southeast part of the county that requested that back in the year 2020. And then lastly, a commercial solar energy system is defined in Article 25, 1035, which is the limited-scale regulation that was adopted previously by this board and the county commissioners earlier this year. So go through the five text amendments, and with that, I guess I would stand for any questions by the board.
Does the board have any questions for staff?
Thank you, Mark.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the public comment phase of this special hearing. Please remember that each person wishing to comment will first state his or her name and address for the record. Each person will be provided with up to five minutes to make his or her comments on all the text amendments, and only one such occasion to comment to the planning commission shall be afforded. We'll grant extra time to finish a sentence or a thought at my discretion.
Casey Swartz, 207 Buckskin Road, Hutchinson, Kansas. I'm here today to speak in opposition to a ban on commercial solar farms in the zoned area of Reno County. Roughly nine months ago, I stood before you giving testimony and thanks for a common-sense and comprehensive set of commercial solar regulations this body had proposed. What a long, strange road this has been since then. Now we have a proposed ban on commercial solar initiated by three anti-solar county commissioners. Commissioners, there is a war raging against renewable energy. As in any war, the first casualty is truth. Powerful and entrenched groups fund disinformation campaigns, and good, well-meaning people unknowingly repeat these falsehoods, doing their best to short-circuit energy projects, solar energy projects, based on a foundation of untruths such as fragile, short-lived, and toxic solar panels. Since 2005, we've built thousands of solar farms across the U.S. If water pollution, GPS interference, airway pollution, panel toxicity, panel fragility, and other accusations were actually an issue, we'd have empirical evidence of it by now, but we don't. Through scores of studies, we have exactly the opposite. Our county faces many challenges: aging infrastructure, population loss, dwindling water supplies, economic decline, vulnerability to wildfires, a warming climate, and more. Solar farms are not a challenge, they are an opportunity. Solar farms of all sizes are quiet. They don't cause earthquakes. They don't pollute our water with nitrates. In operation, they don't pollute our air with particulates and other pollutants. They don't produce foul odors. They don't use vast quantities of water. They don't leak underground, resulting in explosions and death. They're tough, but if damaged, panels pose no detrimental impact to their surroundings. They benefit our community and our energy security. As a society, we seem to have stopped listening to experts. Emotions and politics seem to have taken precedence over facts, but it doesn't have to be this way. Picture, if you will, a Reno county that embraced renewable energy. Imagine several wind farms and solar farms filling county coffers with $4 million a year in pilot payments. Landowners would reap a similar amount in lease payments, stimulating our economy. Local seed companies could be researching and supplying crops best suited for local Local manufacturers could be involved in building and exporting solar trackers and racking components. HCC could assist with research into low-impact solar installations. A Reno County government that embraced solar could even install a ballasted 150-acre community solar farm on the Reno County landfill. The possibilities are endless, the economic benefits undeniable. To wrap things up, in my opinion, solar farm bans are anti-fact. There is ample empirical evidence to show that solar farms present an incredibly low risk to the environment. Lower than agriculture, much lower than fossil fuels, solar farms make good neighbors. In my opinion, solar farm bans are anti-farmer. Property rights matter. Landowners want the freedom to decide what is best for them. Solar leases can be a lifeline to keep land in the family and support overall farming operations. Kansas farmers are proud producers, whether it be grain, livestock, or energy. They should be allowed to use their land to produce without unwarranted governmental interference. In my opinion, solar farm bans are anti-taxpayer. Our county commissioners aggressively look for budget cuts and cost savings, something I really appreciate, yet lacking evidence. They're willing to turn away millions of dollars in income and economic development. A single 1,000-acre solar farm could contribute $68 million to our economy over its lifetime. A solar ban negatively affects every taxpayer in Reno County.
Sorry to interrupt, but your time is up. If you've got a thought you need to finish that one.
Wow, I was slow, wasn't I? Okay, can I just finish then? I ask that you reject the proposed ban on commercial solar in the zoned area of Reno County. Instead of an indiscriminate ban, I please ask that you draft responsible, effective, and fair commercial solar farm regulations. It's time for us to accept facts, reject fear, and carry us into a brighter future. And I have a petition from people who signed it from across the county. May I present it? It's asking for, instead of a ban, actual regulations that are fair and effective. Thank you.
All right. My name is Pippen Williamson. I live at 6 East 82nd Avenue, just north Hutchinson, and I am a rural resident, a landowner, and a business owner here in Reno County. And I agree that we absolutely need to permit commercial solar in Reno County and not ban it in any way. There's two main reasons that I want to share today. There's a lot of reasons I believe this, but there's two I want to focus on. Number one is landowner rights, and number two is the natural process of photosynthesis, the conversion of sunlight into energy. In 1861, Kansas was founded, and since then, we have deeply ingrained it in our culture that we are a state of landowner and property rights, and that we believe deeply that landowners have the right to make a living and provide for themselves, their families, and anyone they employ from their land. We believe that landowners have the right to plant crops, to harvest resources, to drill for oil, drill for gas, or whatever natural resource is available to them on their land. We believe that this is something that landowners are deeply entitled to be able to do. Whether they require a permit or not, they are allowed to do this. We would not tell a farmer that they cannot plant wheat, or soybean, or corn, which we transform into ethanol. We would not tell a landowner that they're not permitted to collect the oil from the oil wells. We would not tell a landowner that they're not permitted to harvest the timber from the land if they want. We would not tell a landowner that they cannot grow grass to feed cattle to sell to the feedlots. These are things that are deeply ingrained in us as Kansans and as us as a state. Now, the vast majority of those things, for example, all of your agricultural crops, all of those are dependent upon the natural transformation of sunlight into energy through photosynthesis. There is really no difference between a landowner that chooses to lease their ground to someone raising cattle, or a landowner that chooses to lease their crop ground to a large-scale commercial farm entity. We all know that the family farm is mostly dead. There is no difference to somebody that chooses to lease their ground for other agricultural or commercial production rights, including oil and gas drilling. There is no difference from those to somebody that chooses to lease their ground for commercial solar production. All of those things depend on transforming sunlight into energy. The difference with a solar cell is that it's transforming it directly into electricity, which is going to pump it directly into our grid to feed our houses, our businesses, and our infrastructure. I personally find it really hard to stomach that we would tell one landowner over here in this part of the county that they are permitted to plant wheat, corn, milo, or that they're allowed to grow grass for cattle, and then we would tell another landowner that they are not permitted to lease their land for solar production. At the end of the day, we're all producing energy, and we're all trying to produce things that allow us. Something deeply ingrained in the state of Kansas. Personally, I don't think we can do that. From a moral perspective, it is really hard for me to stomach that we would tell a landowner that they cannot do this. We all share, whether we are a landowner of one acre or 50,000 acres, we share a resource of sunlight. Some of us utilize that sunlight to grow crops, some of us utilize it to feed cattle, and some of us could, and I think we should, utilize it to produce energy for our infrastructure, our homes, and our business. I personally support commercial solar in Reno County, and I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thank you all for serving on this board. I know that it can be tedious at times. Personally, I know that. I'm in agreement with all the amendments and creations that we're talking about tonight. There's five of them. I do have a question I want you to consider on the accessory uses, 15-109-2H. The stated maximum heights should be 20 feet. How is that measured horizontally or vertically? That should probably be defined. And on the last one prohibiting the commercial solar system, I would suggest that that read solar energy system, commercial utility scale, a type of energy facility which is greater than 10 acres in size, instead of saying or, maybe say and, capable of generating greater than 2 megawatts. Those are just my suggestions. The reason I would like you to add utility scale is because that's more specific definition, and commercial can sometimes be confused with a large building. And looking at other counties' regulations on solar, they've called it commercial utility scale, just like you created the limited scale, you could say utility scale. I also want to give some backup on prohibiting the commercial utility scale system in the zoned area. There has been a new study out by the National Renewable Energy Laboratory, partnered with the University of Minnesota, the Great Plains Institute, and Fresh Energy. They studied five ground-mounted solar sites in the U.S., and these were in Minnesota, New York, Oregon, Colorado, and Georgia. And these sites were used to estimate stormwater runoff based on research and hydrologic modeling. And at these sites, they represented a range of elevations, slopes, soil types, and geographical locations. The modeling results demonstrated that compaction is the most important consideration in determining stormwater runoff. So where the 4,000 land leases are, the 4,000 acres of land leases in the watershed area, that is clay. We call it red jaw. I know, we farm some of it, and it does not absorb water. It runs off, believe me. So what they found out in these five solar sites in the U.S. was that they demonstrated that the compaction is the most important consideration in determining the stormwater runoff. And having compacted soil is caused by heavy equipment during construction and even stabilizing the pilings that they put in the solar fields, and the runoff, the average, was almost 100%. So they're removing the topsoil, and there's heavy grading. So down where the watershed is, it's not flat. Granted, some of the leases are flat, but if you drive down there, some of them are like this, and they're two miles, some of these leases, from Cheney Lake. So sediment is by far the most visible and common pollutant carried by stormwater runoff into the rivers and lakes. So at the November public hearing, you received petitions to prohibit utility-scale solar in the watershed area. These petitions were signed by 373 residents of Reno County who live in or own land in the watershed. You also received a letter from which Top Public Works outlining additional requirements that they suggested be added to the solar regulations that you were working on at the time to provide assurance that the solar developments not negatively affect the drainage ways into the Cheney Reservoir. They specifically addressed the sediment transfer that can originate from erosion, of which new developments such as solar energy facilities can generate higher runoff rates. That is their specific wording. I took it right off their letter that they sent you all. I'm in favor of prohibiting the large utility-scale solar facilities. Why would we take a chance of something happening to the Cheney Reservoir that provides 60% to 70% of the water to Wichita and its surrounding communities? Also, as a side note, there's 10 landowners who have signed leases. Of the 10, seven are absentee landowners. Two live out of state, five live out of Reno County. Sure, they're going to continue to pay their property taxes, but they're not going to buy groceries, or fuel, or clothing, or supplies, or anything else with that lease money they're going to get on an ongoing basis. I've also talked in the last few days to a young farmer that lives in the area down there, and he said I could quote him. When large renewable energy companies offer hundreds or even thousands of dollars in lease money to the landowners, young farmers like myself, who are leasing farm ground, cannot compete with these leases. As young farmers, we are the ones who are helping feed the world. We might be put out of business by these large commercial utility-scale leases.
Sorry to interrupt, but your time's up.
Okay.
If you've got a thought you need to finish that, go ahead.
Yeah. Okay. He also said that lease money might be used, he was told by someone who has a lease, that he could use that money to buy more land, which again, keeps our young farmers incapable of purchasing land at a price they can't afford, because if you have the lease money, you're going to pay more money than the going rate. Anyway, I encourage you to consider those two recommendations that I made and to vote to prohibit solar, commercial solar. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
What's the point of order?
No.
Go ahead.
Can you repeat the study that you referred to?
Yeah. It was the National Renewable Energy Laboratory, partnered with the University of Minnesota, Great Plains Institute, and Fresh Energy.
Thank you.
I brought homework.
As a matter of fact.
I am Susan Helton, 10408 East Smoots Creek Road. I handed out a sheet with just some basic research. You can see on there that I have studies currently being done to research best practices of utility solar farm. Virginia Tech, the first article was in 2023, and then this current article that I have just below, and I understand you can't actually read those articles here, but it's good background information for you, and the Berkeley one, and the Ohio research projects. The point of all of these research projects is simply because we don't know. There's plenty of energy companies that will tell you, well, this is great, but of course, what are they going to tell you? Of course, they're going to tell you it's great. And for some situations, it might be. These three, especially the Virginia Tech one that I have showed you, in their first year, they've really figured out, like, one of the major things is the soil runoff and just how to shape it in the future. It's a six-year project, so by the end of six years, they're like, you know, we're not pro, we're not con, we just want to figure out how to build these solar farms. We just want to figure out how to build these solar farms to make the best impact for the economy, of course, but for the environment, and for everybody to get an advantage out of it. So in all three of the ones that I listed, the Ohio, the Berkeley, and the Virginia Tech, they all said, we don't know. We don't know. We can't say, oh, this is the best, this is the whatever. Because there's no research. And I know that there's some local people that have some great stuff on websites, but it's a one-man show. It's not like scientific. I do need to say that everything that Margie said, I totally agree with about the five different amendments, text amendments to the Reno County zoning regulations. I do have a question on 15-109 accessory uses allowed. The number two is, is the maximum height shall be 20 feet. I'm just wondering, how is that measured? Is that measured flat? Or is that measured as the tilt? You know, is it 20 feet from the top of the tilt, or just flat? And then on the number three, who determines the ag use? It says agricultural uses are exempt from the zoning regulations. So is what qualifies as ag use? Something to think about. I mean, transmission lines are always a thing. I don't know how much time I have.
We've got about two minutes or so.
Oh, all right. You know I could talk for that long. So one thing that Margie brought up that I really want to touch on is the erosion control plan for any installation of, I mean, this, small or large, you have to have an erosion control plan. And you can look at any pro or con website out there, and they will tell you the same thing. The leveling of the land, the excavation, and the barrel operations, those can definitely harm it. But then you have the wind and the rain that come in before, you know, it takes time for all of that to pack down and to be the way it needs to be. And the red clay, which is funny, because I just found this today. Of course, red jaw. I live in red jaw country, and I know how difficult it is. So when they do the crops between the rows, it takes a number of years for those crops to actually grow, especially in our area because of red jaw. And for years, it's just going to be weeds and dirt. And of course, weeds and dirt, rain, phew, there you go. It's running off into the neighbors, it's running off into, I mean, especially the watershed area. That's my major concern.
Sorry to interrupt, but your time's up.
Okay.
You've got a thought you need to finish, go right ahead.
I have lots of thoughts to finish, buddy.
Make it short and sweet.
I will make it short and sweet. Overall, thank you for doing what you do. I know it's a huge time constraint for you. Please just research, take your time, and don't rush to listen to people who may not have our county's interest in best. Yes. Sorry.
Well, I've heard two references to this red jaw clay. And so I'm curious about how the runoff is different from agricultural use to what might happen in a solar install.
Well, in a solar install, you know, they're taking off the top layer of regular soil, and then they get down to the red jaw. I mean, they have to, it's just, that's how it's done. And once you get down, and then they bring some of that soil back in. So it's really like any kind of ground soil movement where when you take it off and you put it back, I mean, it takes years to fully compact back to where it should be. But red jaw is, you can't grow anything on that. Typically, that's why they put the soil on top of it, the farmers do. I know, we couldn't even build a house on part of our property because it's got red jaw. The sewage, you couldn't get the water to flow underneath. Like regular soil, it would kind of seep down. But in red jaw, it just washes off.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Andy Elton, 10408 East Smoots Creek Road. I just want to say I agree with those previous two ladies and support their viewpoints. Not because I have to, because I want to. With the red jaw, part of the thing with that is there's a layer of shale that sheds whatever comes to it, whatever direction it's pointed. So things like toxins would just not sit in the ground. They're going to flow at some point. But the gentleman that spoke earlier when we walked in, he makes good points about people being able to use their land. And I agree with a lot of that libertarian kind of viewpoint. But when you start using terms like industrial and commercial, sorry, you lose me. Those are not typical land uses that you would support your neighbor putting next to you, right? A lot of us moved out into the country to get away from that stuff. So bringing it out into the country, yeah. That's not a land use that I could support from the libertarian point of view. The other thing that, I've heard people, I'm not an expert on any of this stuff, but I've heard people talk about there aren't any studies proving that chemicals can wash off from these into the water supply. And I think Margie actually has one that does. But my point here would be there aren't any studies that prove it cannot happen. I consider bringing a glass of water up here that I leached some chemicals from a solar panel into and ask anybody if they want to drink that, right? I don't think anybody'd take me up on that offer. But that's kind of what we're facing here, is the proximity of some of this land to a water supply. You guys are worried about getting sued. If this goes through, you're probably going to get sued by Wichita. I'd be really surprised if they didn't. But my last thing here is, I'm a big fan of technology. I'm an engineer. I love the idea of solar being turned into energy, even wind turbines turning into energy. But neither of these technologies are there yet. They're just not. They're not efficient. You could say they're more efficient than they were at some point in the past, but they're not. They're really not. They're not significantly, not compared to other technologies. And then the other technology goes along with this to make it practical is batteries. So batteries are some of the worst technology out there, quite frankly. You could say, oh, they're getting better, but they're not. They're better than they were 50 years ago? Not really. Not like other technologies. And they're also more dangerous in terms of the ability to combust and not be able, a lot of those batteries, they cannot put out. They're literally, let them burn themselves out. So, all right, that's all I had. Thank you.
My name is Rob Schmutz. I live 14601 South Yoder Road, Haven, Kansas. We are seven miles north of Cheney Reservoir and live within the Cheney water quality area and also the Cheney watershed. I agree very much with the last three speakers, and I would take issue with the first two speakers on several items. One, I would say that, man, we've had some hail where we live and had some serious roof damage. And I can't imagine a solar panel enduring what our roof did not endure, or windshield's to vehicles did not endure. And that would be a concern to me, how that would affect Cheney Reservoir. And with that said, also, I would also address the issue of the difference between leasing your land out for cattle grazing on it or growing soybeans on it, and leasing it out to put a permanent structure like a solar panel or a commercial utility-scale solar project. I don't think those are two comparable things. But I do want to say thank you for these amendments. Thank you for the work that you do. I agree with the previous three speakers, the amendments here. I would like to say that, I would like to ask you, I'm a sportsman. I fish Cheney Reservoir, I hunt Cheney Reservoir, the area around it, and I feed my family from the land. I would like to say, please, do everything you can to protect the Cheney watershed. Do everything that you can to protect that water source. And how many of us remember, I think it was 2010, when the Wichita Eagle Beacon headline was, "What Happens When Cheney Reservoir Dries Up? Where Will Wichita Get Its Water?" I remember seeing that headline. I remember Cheney Reservoir. I took my young son, who's now 16, out into the middle of Cheney Reservoir, and it was dried up, almost completely gone. And then there were some ladies in our area that got together, and they went out in the middle of that lake, and they prayed. And within just a matter of days, that reservoir filled back up. What I would like to say is, please, do not do anything that's going to cause damage or harm to Cheney Reservoir. It's important to Reno County. It's important to Sedgwick County. And I think it's important to all of us. And as a person that lives within the Cheney watershed, as a person that raises sheep on the land that I live on, I am against utility-scale solar, and I'm against large-scale solar of any kind. That's all I have.
Well, I could wait for you.
Oh, that's great.
Oh, sorry. Hi, I'm Jean Kongling, 21806 South Roddickers Road, Pretty Prairie. And I thought if I listened to some of the other ones, that would make it easy for me, and they did. So I agree with the last four speakers. And so they covered pretty much several or all of the points that I was going to talk about. And I'm not sure, I sent some, I just wanted to reiterate that I had sent some emails, and Mark would have sent those on to you guys so you can look at some of those, and a couple of the research articles that I looked at. And I agree that it's important to prohibit the solar, the commercial utility-scale solar facility in the Cheney Lake watershed area where you can right now, where it's zoned. And so, and I would like to throw my little request in is that when it's considered, when you're working on the solar regulations again, please make them that, ensure that they protect the watershed areas and put that overlay for solar like it was done for the wind, the commercial wind energy plants. And so as long as you can regulate them to make them responsible and, you know, do so many things that have, you know, with the mitigation charts and all of the numbers and everything, if you can just do whatever you can to regulate very firmly so they have to follow those rules, that would be great. And just concerning, one of the articles that I had sent was on the solar farms are bad, often bad for biodiversity, but they don't have to be. And so one of those articles. And so they can alter everything from sun exposure to moisture to surface temperatures, and they have unintended and unexpected impacts on local plants and animals, and even the area's microbiome. And so that was one thing that needs to be considered in this. And it's not just the Cheney Lake, it's that whole wildlife area around the lake and that whole environmental area around it that needs to be protected in this particular instance. And then the one gentleman talked about hunting and everything. And solar installations do appear to contribute to bird mortality, maybe not as much as some people say is running into the big glass buildings and everything, but that there's kind of a lake effect. So they see those solar panels, and sometimes those reflections look to them like water, and they land on them and die. And then it fragments water habitat or migration corridors. And one of the things, many of the impacts remain unknown, like the one gentleman was also talking about, is that we don't know what impact they can have at this point. So I agree totally that we need solar and wind energy, but we need to be sure that they don't cause more problems than they address. So we have to have this balance between renewable energy and the coal, oil, and gas. Kind of blend those and figure out some kind of balance. And many of the impacts are unknown because it's often difficult for researchers to gain access to solar facilities and the environmental data that they collect, because those companies collect data. But often, it's not complete thorough data. It might be done once or twice a year. And they need to do before construction, during construction, after construction data. And often, they're not transparent with their data. And sometimes they call the data that they do gather proprietary data. So they're not sharing it with the researchers. So we need to allow those researchers in. And then one other thing is that I had set along is a pollinator habitat planning tool that Missouri had put into their state laws. And so that's something you can consider with the regulations and everything. So I think, and then it's just kind of like where the location is for the solar collectors. You know, if it's land that's not much good for anything else, that'd be great for solar collectors. So the best mitigation strategy is to avoid developing sensitive and pristine areas. And the area around the lake, any of that, is very definitely, it may not be pristine, but it's very valuable to protect the water supply and to protect the wildlife that is around there and the plants and stuff that grow around the lake that help clarify the water. So I think that's about it. So I've said everything I need to, yes, sir.
I'm a little confused on your position, because I understood you to say that you support the ban, but I also heard in your comments that you would support some close regulation for wildlife and pollinators and what have you. So I'm trying to understand what your position is.
Right now, I definitely agree with the prohibition in that zoned area around the lake. That's not a good place to put it. So if there are some areas in the county that are not going to be as harmful to the environment and the wildlife and water, so it's kind of, like I said, there's this kind of balance. We're going to need some solar, but some locations are pretty much terrible for solar and/or large wind projects. So that's kind of where you may see some of that problem in where my position is. So I'm a solar-wind fan, but it has to be responsibly sited. It has to be responsibly maintained. It has to be responsibly researched, mitigation. And so anything around that Cheney Reservoir is a horrible place for solar panels. And like I said, I do, I would like an overlay with very, very strict regulations on the company that they have to be held to be accountable to. And I live in the unzoned, one of the unzoned area. I'm about a half a mile from the Cheney Reservoir zoned area. So I'm just about half a mile out into the unzoned area. And so that's why I'm kind of interested in an overlay, and we're part of that watershed area too, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the question.
Wayne Mans, 14918 East Maple Grove Road. Along the lines of what Jean was saying about, you know, proper placement and finding a place of benefit, it seems contradictory to me to take land that was once used to grow our food, and now we're going to use it to provide energy. I mean, it seems like there would be a much better way to do solar. Like, one of the best ideas I've seen is putting them on roofs of parking garages or other large buildings where we've already interrupted the soil, but not go in and, you know, uproot our natural resources and to put them there and possibly cause harm. But I agree with the ban and many of the other people and their comments. Thank you.
Norman Biggs, 4602 East Arlington Road, Haven, Kansas. I agree with the restrictions and the ban on the commercial solar in those areas that we have questions. You know, we can speculate about these things, but we should You know, we can speculate about these things, but we should definitely go on the side of caution. And so I, I agree with pretty much what has been said. Again, we live in this area, would probably be more impacted than anyone else, and it's not a good thing to go out and buy property such as I did and then to find out that you're in a, an area. It doesn't look like the big major thing is right next to me, but I have to consider the, the people who are as well. So again, I would appreciate your consideration and the ban and would also approve the changes to the regulations as, as were earlier stated. I don't know what you called it, but you understand what I mean?
Okay. Thank you.
Angela Mans, 14918 East Maple Grove Road. I also support the ban as it supports, I feel like, the comprehensive plan. Since there's been a huge growth in our neighborhood, in our area where we live, lots of new homes and stuff, and so something like this could, and that's bringing a huge amount of income to our county. So why take a chance of losing that income? These are houses that are paying taxes for years and years. So why would we, you know, check, you know, potentially cause an issue with that? We also don't know what the effects of solar long-term is. We don't know what, if it is going to go into the water for sure, why take a chance? Wichita spends a lot of money in our area to try to protect their watershed for their water. So why would we want to potentially use that as an issue? The other thing, I really, the idea of putting solar panels on buildings, that makes more sense to me. Why would we use good farm ground for solar panels when we could put them on buildings that have already been disturbed? But again, I just support all the amendments and the ban on solar. Thank you.
James Schlickow, 11510 East Irish Creek Road in Haven. And I support many of the comments, starting with Marty actually, and then continuing through. I also would, would ask for you to consider prohibition of commercial-scale solar in the watershed district and the zoned area. I'll speak to you as a producer. There was a question about red jaw and what that is. We've been a producer there since, for 150 years, and I, I try to be a good steward of the ground, and I intend to pass this off to a fifth generation. The, the red, it is red shale, and it, and there's a lot of clay, so there's a lot of runoff. I'm worried about sedimentation into the reservoir. At the closest point, our property is three-fourths of a mile from the northern edge of the reservoir, and at the furthest point, we're three miles away on, on Parallel Road. I, I don't know what else I need to tell you about that. As a producer trying to improve grass quality, I have built cross fence for rotational grazing purposes, and as I'm digging brace holes to, to anchor the fence, I've had four or five of those holes fill up with water before I was even done digging. So to me, it, it makes no sense to compromise the water resource that is the reservoir, where 67% of the water goes to the greater Wichita area, or they, they rely on that, but also pumping water from the equus beds. And as a producer, that concerns me as well, that they, at some point, may limit our ability to, to use irrigation. Those are just some additional thoughts, but again, I thank you for your service, but I am against commercial-scale solar. Yes, Garth?
What do you produce on your land?
That ground is native grass, is buffalo grass. Buffalo grass does quite well in that area. One piece, the one piece I'm referring to, the northern piece off of Parallel is actually a tall section. It's almost 800 acres, continuous. No, no structure's ever been built on that, on that parcel. No improvements, nothing else, just native grass. A windmill for cattle, and that's about it, solar. We do have solar tanks, but again, you talked about being exempt for ag, and then, and there's a lot of those out there in production being used. What's most conducive, and what, I'll back up a little bit. Some of, some of the years, back decades back, some producers thought it would be a great idea to break out that ground and plant wheat, when wheat is worth something. But what they did is, in, it didn't produce very well. It was usually one of the lower-yielding fields. So when CRP, the Conservation Reserve Program came into, was offered, and it paid farmers to put that, those acres that were broken out for production back into native grass. And that was actually the smartest thing to do, because it also, that's what grew the best, but it also, it, it provide a filtration process for all the water that flows towards the reservoir. Hopefully, that answers your question. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, Garth?
Not clear. So was you suggesting prohibiting large-scale solar in only the watershed area of the zoned area or the entire zoned area?
I think it's critical to prohibit it in the watershed of the zoned area.
Okay. Thank you.
Don't be shy, we haven't bitten through 11 people, so we're all right.
Paul Michaels, 730 Dulkn Drive, up in the Highlands. You guys are in a very difficult position, hearing all the arguments we've had here tonight. It doesn't seem like everybody's that far apart. There are people that are pro, there are people that are against, all the bans that are out there right now. Even people that, you guys have asked clarifying questions for, are you for it, but why are you against it, and different things like that. I think that a flat-out ban is irresponsible of the county. That is something that mitigation is the right way to approach any issue. This is how things have been done for a long time. Many of these questions here today have been for mitigation, making sure the watersheds are protected, making sure that animals, wildlife, grasses, growth. That is a way that I think the regulations should be done. A flat-out ban is irresponsible. It hurts economics. Ark Valley, Ark Valley has paused their rollout, saving hundreds of thousands of dollars for their customers. These are things that are hurting, hurting the customers in Reno County today. Things that are going to be economic drivers, development of growth, businesses in the area. I do believe that with the concerns that are with us today, this is something that you guys have been in a very hard position to slice and put different things, but I am against a ban, and I think that you guys are, have a hard decision ahead of you guys tonight. Thank you.
Keith Richardson, 602 Rustic Road, here in Hutch, so, not county, not dealt with you guys. From what I've heard, and I'm encouraged by what I've heard, but from what I've heard, I've heard a lot of, and I don't mean to be disrespectful, but nimby, not in my backyard. Is that reasonably correct? And I understand that. I agree with that gentleman over there in the blue shirt.
Paul.
Paul, yeah. There's got to be a way that we can protect sensitive areas, like the watershed district around Cheney Lake, and still not totally ban solar farms in, throughout the county, or at least in the zone. I know there's a fear that the three commissioners who are against solar power would also want to ban it in the unzoned areas of the county, the western two-thirds. I think that's irresponsible too. So I would say there's got to be some ground, common ground that we can meet on, that you as commissioners can meet on and recommend to the county commissioners, that we do some sort of great job of protecting sensitive areas, like the watershed, but without banning, and you're all smart people, I know you can figure that out. I'm not one of them, that's why I'm not on your commission. But there's got to be some way that we can accommodate everybody, I think, without killing solar in Reno County altogether. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who'd like to comment?
Can we go back out?
Probably about 30-second or so delay outside if there's people outside, so. Give it a little bit. Yeah. Might be a good time for our board to take a short recess also, where you can stretch your legs just a little bit. Sure. Okay. I think we'll take a, we'll take just a five-minute recess. Let's make it eight minutes, that way it'll be, make it a round number, we'll be back at 6:40.
6:40.
6:40. We'll meet at 6:40.
We'll meet at 6:40. Is there anyone else who'd like to get up? So, entertaining public comment on the text amendments? Everybody had their say. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, I believe at this time, I'm allowed to, this will be a last call. Anyone who'd like to speak on the text amendments?
If we close the public hearing, we can't ask anyone at a future date for more information.
No. Yeah, once the hearing is closed, then you need to base your decisions on the record and the testimony that you've heard here today.
And the emails?
Any emails and everything else, yeah.
Up until?
Up until, yeah, yeah. I could have other emails have been submitted. Do you have a concern?
Well, the soil runoff deal issue has been raised. Maybe we haven't discussed it. I think the first four, maybe we'll make a decision on. But the commercial maybe needs to be studied a little bit. And I wouldn't want to prohibit us from being able to ask outside sources for information.
Gail, what's your thoughts? Just listening? Gar? Are you okay?
I would agree with Jack, the first four seem fairly simple. The last one, it's got a lot of moving parts and, I know I have seen some different references tonight, so I guess I would like the chance to spend a little time with whatever those might be.
Even though, to that point, if we would close the public hearing, you could still have a chance to review and we can come back at a later date to decide.
Right.
Steve, thoughts?
Well, I think, you know, we've talked about runoff, effects of runoff from sediment in the past during our meetings for formulating these regulations and whatnot, and I'm satisfied with the way they are.
Okay. Alan?
Well, I just want a point of clarification. We're talking about the last text amendment, the commercial solar ban. That's the entire zoned area of the county. We're not talking about a specific project or a specific part of the zoned area. So, I think we've, we've heard a lot of testimony that seems to focus on a very small geographic area. So, outside of that, just kind of point of clarification, I think I'm, I think I'm like Steve. We've talked about this quite a bit over the last year.
Okay, Harley, your thoughts?
Well, we, what we have done to date was more or less at the direction of the county commission. And the thing that I'm a little awkward in my mind about is the fact that it's all talked about the Cheney Lake watershed area. And the Cheney Lake watershed area is much greater than just the zoned area. And that bothers me a lot because I, even though we all collectively come to an agreement what the county commission asked us to evaluate, and we did, I'm of the opinion that that's the rest of the county is, even though it's in the watershed area of the Cheney reservoir, it's a long ways from be agreeing with this prohibiting in the watershed, in the zoned area.
So, as far as, have you heard all the facts that you thought you needed to hear?
Yeah. We've been around that bush many times collectively, and we've done it together. And so, the regulations are so written, I don't see no need to change any of those unless we get other direction from the county commission.
I get that, just by the straw pull that I just made with this, with this board, it seems like we're okay with closing the public hearing. Is that the, is that the opinion of this board?
Yes.
You know, Jack and Gar, you probably want to keep it open. Gail, what do you think?
Keep the public hearing open?
Yes.
I don't need to do that.
Okay.
I don't need to.
Okay. That's the opinion. I think that at this time, we'll close the public hearing portion of this, of this hearing. So, at this time, we can discuss the text amendments as they, as they have been written, as we, as we have reviewed those over time. We can, we've got, we've got several options. We can, there's, we can vote on all five at once. I, for one, am not in favor of that piece of that puzzle. We can piecemeal those out on, on five different votes, but I believe that we could probably lump the text amendments that define limited scale, that create private regulations that involve just defining what those, what the limited scale and private is, separate from the prohibition. Or we could, we could continue to another date and time. What's the, what's the pleasure of this board?
I don't know, you know, I think we pretty well close out most of these tonight. I would like to make one, you know, a couple of points have been brought up on, like the roof, or the ground mounted units, you know, where we're heights limitation, we have, we do not say how that is measured. That's on page 14, I think, or page 13 and 15, actually. Wouldn't be too hard to change that to define how that measurement is construed, you know, from the ground to the most vertical position of the panel. I think that's what the intent was in all our conversations.
Yeah, that's the intent, but, but you referenced Article 13, and there's no amendment to Article 13 with there. And so, because we said, everything, because height is included in Article 13, and so we don't really have it specifically defined. So, I think in the future, we would have to go back and, and try and define how we measure height of anything. But you can infer that it's going to be vertical, you know, like a vertical height or so. So, I.
Well, in this case, on a panel, it could be either this way or this way. You'd have to do it to its, you know, for its highest vertical point.
Yes.
Can we do that in this?
I think we would, we would do that in Article 13, I think, versus maybe here.
Are we amending Article 13 anywhere? No. So, you're saying you let this go, and then we'll have to do Article 13 somewhere else?
We do Article 13, because that's one of the things that we were looking at before, was looking at some of our setback requirements, everything in Article 13. So, when we tackle that, we can look at how to either change it in Article 13 and define how we measure height, or add a definition in Article 1.
Past this, then we have a gray area until that gets you fine.
Yes.
That could be several.
We have just a lot of gray areas to kind of clear up, yeah. So, what's the, what's the wishes of this board? Do we want to make a decision on four of the, of the text amendments? Which would be 15-105, both, all three paragraphs, 15-109, which would include definitions of limited scale, creates private solar regulations, eliminate the verbiage solar collectors from the, from the regulations, and creates private solar regulations for private zone R1, R2, R3, V1. Could all, could we, do we, do we want to put those in a, in a group and decide on those?
I think we could.
I think we could.
I would make that motion that we approve the first, at least the list I'm looking at, the first four text amendments.
Okay.
As you just enumerated.
So, you're, you're, you're moving that we approve 15-105, paragraph 58A, 15-109, paragraph 1, sub-paragraph L, 15-109, paragraph 2, sub-paragraph A, and 15-109, paragraph 2, sub-paragraph H?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Stan, can you please call the roll?
Sure, sir.
Strand?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gertsen?
Yes.
That leaves the last article, 15-111, paragraph 8, the prohibition of commercial solar, commercial solar energy system in the zoned area of the county. Any discussion on that, or again, we have, we have the opportunity to continue if you want to do some more review, or we can decide this evening. It's, that's completely the, completely the wishes of the board.
I kind of think, you know, we beat this pretty much. We've talked about a lot of these issues. We talked about the runoff, the sediment, everything else. I would go ahead and make a motion that we approve Article 15-111, sub-paragraph 8. That's written.
It's been moved, do I hear a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. It feels to me that we need some more time to review this one. Is that what, is that what I'm feeling? Maybe I'm misinterpreting the lack of second.
I, there is a lot of information to take in. A little bit of it is, I have not looked at what was referenced tonight. But before I even get to that, I think about the purpose, you know, we are to determine land use. And when I look at the list of other land uses that are already approved, I find it difficult to make a greater case against solar than I would some of these others. And I'll just name off a few that kind of jumped off the page at me. There's a, a lot of them listed. Over 54. 62. The first one happens to be adult entertainment establishment, so I'm not sure who would want to be next door to that, but it is approved as a possible land use. Airports, heliports, cemeteries, crematories, commercial stockyard or feedlot. And when I think about that and potential runoff, in my mind, solar is way behind that possibility. Drive-in theaters. This one really got me, explosives, fireworks, ammunition, black powder, or similar material for wholesale, storage, warehousing, or manufacturing. Green elevators. Jails. Correctional institutions. Junkyards. I was surprised to see junkyards as an approved land use. I mean, obviously, these all have to go through the conditional use permit process, but, boy, junkyard's a pretty dicey, dicey neighbor, especially when you think of aesthetics and runoff and, that's a tough one. Research laboratories. So, you kind of get, get where I'm at. Taking all the sanitary landfills. I have a hard time kicking solar farms out of the list like this, when these are already approved for consideration for conditional use permits. So, just on that fact alone, I find it hard to single out a particular land use or industry as the case may be. Knowing that in any of these cases, the conditional use permit process is still, is still in place. We seem to be comfortable with that in Reno County, and going through public hearings and, and deciding what's an acceptable land use for this project located in this spot. And so, when I think of a commercial solar install, well, you know, if the edge of their property is going to be the edge of Cheney Lake, yeah, that's probably, that's probably not going to make it. But if it's a reasonable distance away, passes all of the other concerns, it would be perhaps a good, a good use of land in Reno County. be perhaps a good use of land in Reno County. So I guess where I'm at is I'm not even getting to a conditional use permit. I'm just thinking, is this something that could be considered for a conditional use permit application? And the answer for me is yes.
I understand Garth's point on that, but I think there's, I think what he's missing, at least to me, is that in wind and solar, commercial solar, you're looking at a much larger scale area-wise. You're looking at hundreds or thousands of acres of ground, not a quarter section of ground, 100 acres, 50 acres or something. It's a very massive land use that is going to have a lot of impacts, taking that land out of production, environmental issues, and everything else. It's, I don't think it's, you know, I think it's to us to make that decision, trying to protect the watershed. Well, if you look at the map of the watershed, that pretty well takes in a lot, you know, probably half of the zoned area of Reno County, the southern half of the zoned area at least, close to that.
Wait, you have the map out, don't you? I don't, I think half might be a bit generous. I don't, is there a way you can put this on a screen, or is that probably not at this point?
I don't have that, yeah.
Because the watershed, it's really just...
Yeah. You'd have to figure out where the zoned area is.
Well, the zoned area's on the map. It's a little area, so it's really just a small portion. Most of the Cheney watershed is not in the zoned area.
Yeah, zoned area.
And most of the zoned area is not in the Cheney Lake watershed.
So you get into, you get more of the watershed than you're getting more of the populous area. So...
I think we're all in agreement that when it says, within the jurisdictional boundary of Article 1-103, that's the zoned area. Is that what?
That's exactly right.
Right. I think we all have in our minds that there are areas in Reno County where a large commercial solar project doesn't belong. I think that's a pretty safe assumption. I, the way the text amendment is written, a blanket prohibition, boy, I, you know, just as someone who's very pro-private property rights, that's a very big ask of the government. We're making a very large restriction on private property owners when we do a blanket ban of anything. And I, that's, that's a very tough bridge for me to cross.
And I share some of the same concerns there, that blanket brand, because who knows that picture, the whole county would be zoned. We're not here thinking about that at all.
We heard some common theme in some of the testimony tonight about mitigation. We also, what also rings in my mind, being a good steward of the land that you own. And I don't think us as a board, now, this is, I don't believe us as a board can determine whether or not a person is going to be a good steward of his land or not, and prohibit what he can or cannot do in his property. That, the stewardship is a decision of the landowner. Now, it, you know, it goes back to being neighborly. I mean, that's a piece of this puzzle, being a good steward. But I think, I'm with Alan and Harley, that I believe that there's probably, there are some places that don't, that commercial scale solar does not belong. But I, at this point, I, I want to leave that decision to the landowner to be a good steward of his or her land. Now, I know we heard tonight that there are some absentee landowners that have no connection to this county. But we also have some generational farmers that are participating in this that we didn't hear from, or heard from one possibly, that probably wish they could control what they do on their farm from this point forward, rather than having somebody dictate it. At this point, I'm, I can't go for a blanket prohibition.
I think we're smart enough that when a specific situation comes along, and we have a conditional use permit put before us, that we can make good decisions at that time.
And I agree with that 100%.
And on a conditional use permit, we could put additional restrictions on that permit at that time, that I think could probably make everybody happy. I'll add a little bit more. I think I mentioned this in previous meetings. I might be inclined to think a little differently, because I know there are valid concerns, and there certainly have been one-off events around the country that turned into a disaster situation, which can happen with any construction project. It's not limited to solar or drilling, or, you know, pick your industry. Bad things can happen. But I looked at the Kansas Geological Survey, and there's five active injection wells. No, there's one active injection well, five miles from the lake. There's an unplugged injection well, two miles from the lake. And I was totally shocked to see the number of pipelines that go through that Cheney Lake watershed. There were so many, it's hard to count. I have at least six gas transmission lines and 10 hazardous liquid pipelines. And then I looked back beyond that, went back to 1966, about every other year, there's a reportable pipeline spill. And for some reason, we take all of these things in stride, and we don't think about some of the things we're thinking about when something new, such as solar, comes along. We have some fears of the unknown, I think, while the known, known things, and certainly agriculture is, as I understand from the Cheney Lake watershed, that's their biggest concern. And we certainly, we don't want to infringe on that. We have to find ways to mitigate, just as we talked about with solar. And, you know, we're mitigating agricultural-generated issues, and I suspect that we can do the same with whatever might arise with solar installs.
Any other discussion on Article 15-111?
Hearing silence. Mr. Chair, I will move that we not approve the text amendment to Article 15-118.
I'll second that.
We're moving to second it. Is there any discussion? So just to clarify that motion, you're moving to not accept the prohibition of commercial solar energy?
Correct.
Okay. Everybody on the same page with that?
So just as, I apparently need lots of clarification, but...
That's okay. I thought I'd clarify, just to start. I'd get the ball rolling.
But if we, if this, if this motion passes, then does that mean that at some point, we're going to have to revisit the regulations of this?
That'd be a good question.
Maybe. To be determined. Depends on if this is ultimately passed, and then we either revisit the commercial solar regulations, or we don't revisit it. I mean, yeah, it's just a one, one step at a time. More than likely, we would have to revisit the commercial solar regulation issue.
We do not have...
Is it not dependent on what the commissioners determine?
It's really dependent on what they, yeah.
So there would be that.
I mean, there's that element.
So there's multiple options that could happen in the future.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's like one step at a time.
But we are capable of that, as we have proven in the past.
Yes.
Yes.
We do not have large-scale solar commercial regulations yet.
Yeah.
No.
We worked that to a point, but it wasn't...
But we never got there, so we're...
We was there and called off. And I would look forward to going back and doing that because of things we've heard and learned about mitigation, and some of the discussions that have come up throughout this process. So I would look forward to picking up where we left off and making that better.
Any further discussion on the motion?
So as the motion goes right now, we would not prohibit large-scale solar?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's going to be our recommendation that we send to you?
To the mission.
Good?
Yep.
Any more discussion? Okay, just to clarify one more time, this is to deny prohibition of commercial scale solar in the zoned area of the county. Okay, staff, please call the roll.
Shortfeger?
Yes.
Strand?
Did we have a second?
Yes, we did.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Shafer?
Yes.
Seltzer?
No.
Macklin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gertsen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That completes all items of business this evening. Staff, do you have anything more to go before we move on?
I do, I don't have anything else.
Does the board have any other, any other business needs to be brought before this board?
When's our next regular meeting?
August 16. 15-16. Okay. Chair will entertain the next one.
Second.
We're moving to second. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.